Okay, it's 6:30. I don't want to be disrespectful of the fact that there are some folks in the lobby, but I want to be respectful of the time that we said we would start at 6:30. And I know that it's a busy evening and that it's a school night for everyone. So I'm calling this meeting to order. It's 6:31. We have a full dais. And I want to talk a little bit. The agenda is really short. Want to make a few things clear before we get started. Number one, we will be doing no voting tonight. There is no final decision that's going to be made by any stretch of the imagination. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to gather information. So as we have citizens that have signed up to speak, we won't be engaging with them. It is not because we're not interested. We've all got pen and paper and we are going to be taking copious notes. If we're talking to you, you are not giving us information. And the purpose of tonight is to gather as much information as we possibly can in a fairly short amount of time. Before we have our code enforcement officer come up, Troy is our code enforcement officer and he is going to set the stage to make sure that everybody is extremely clear on the state of the issue. There's a lot of misinformation about what's really the rule, what's not the rule, what's included in the rules. So Troy's going to go over that because it would be very helpful if we're all on the same page before we move forward. However, there are a couple of things that I want to address before we get going. Yes, it's real easy to make some jokes and I've heard some good ones today. And there are folks that are saying, "Don't you have some more important issues in the city that you should be addressing?" So I want to meet that head on. Here's the answer to that. It's not funny if it's impacting your quality of life. It's not funny if it's something that you're having to deal with, but other folks are talking about it. And I will tell you that of the 176 items that the city manager has on her work plan this year, when we get an overwhelming number of emails, both for and against, dealing with each of those takes time that could be being spent on getting our work items addressed. So we're trying to be respectful of the fact that indeed we have three choices, given the amount of input that we've received from our citizenry. We can do absolutely nothing and ignore you. Generally, not a good idea. We can make a decision with no input from the community, put our great minds together and say, "This is what we're going to do and too bad you can like it or get over it." Or the third option is to use the democratic process, gather all the information that we can, put that together with other known facts that we have and other places that have dealt with this together, make the best decision that we can, and move forward. And that's why we're having this meeting. I want to make sure that we all realize that we're inside hallowed halls of City Hall. I expect you to be respectful to each other. I expect you to be respectful to council. Council will absolutely be respectful to you. But we want to address this issue and make sure that we don't have to have another one of these meetings every year, that we all understand what is going on. With that, I would like to ask our code enforcement officer, Troy Walters, is going to come forward. He's got a presentation and he's going to give us the state of where we are and what the rules are and what the issue is and outline that for us. Thank you so much, Troy.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. What do I hit first? Yeah, it's minimized here. Okay. First of all, thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and the citizens of Bastrop for attending this meeting and ordering chicken and food for the audience. All right, I'm going to go over a couple of things with the ordinance.
Troy, if you don't speak into the mic, the people at home cannot hear you and they will start complaining.
All right.
Troy, come get this.
Is that better? Okay. I'll start with some of the presentation with the city ordinance. But to set the groundwork, what I'm going to give you is first is a map of the city. And I have some chickens on it so you can see where we're talking about free-range chickens. The two yellow icons on the corner up there is Farm Street from 95 all the way to the train tracks. That area is 1,500 feet. That is designated as the Chicken Sanctuary. And those are protected birds. If you look at the little icons of chickens throughout the city, those are generally the area that we have a lot of chicken calls and there's a population of chickens hanging around. And if your home is on there somewhere and you don't see a chicken next to it, it's just because I didn't have a lot of them there, but they do migrate around. There's the Chicken Sanctuary. Basically, it says the protected animals there on the right is from our city ordinance. The yellow there and the arrows where the streets are is right behind the convention center. So that's our designated Chicken Sanctuary. We do have some restrictions on keeping fowl and livestock in the city. Basically, the first one is if you're in a residential area and you want to have some chickens or you want to have a horse, you have to be 50 feet from the other residence or dwelling, whatever the wording is. If you are near an area that's open to the public, it has to be within 100 feet. In addition to that, at the very bottom, number three is very general about it, nuisance, and kept in a manner in which the noise and the odors and et cetera, et cetera, that come with keeping livestock and fowl that could disturb your neighbor and with ordinary senses and becomes a nuisance. These are some types of the... These are examples of the types of complaints that we get about the free-range chickens that are around the city. Basically, the chickens or the roosters are chasing our future generation while they're going to school. There's large quantities of feral roosters congregating in the trees and adjacent properties to people that had chicken coops, complaints of excessive feces and porches on the sidewalks, roosters are crowing. They don't necessarily crow in the morning like foghorn, leghorn used to, you see in the cartoons. And I know I'm dating myself, but they crow all hours. And when one crows, they all crow down the street. That disrupts not only citizens sleeping, but it also disrupts guests that are coming in and staying in our bed and breakfast here in the city. And the aggressive roosters also are chasing people while they're getting out of their car or getting out of their home and going to their car to and from, and they go after them. The other one, the hens are laying eggs. They lay them in gardens. They lay them in flower beds. They lay them in shrubs. But one of the problems that they've been doing is jumping on the carports and they lay them up in the rafters and they roll off onto people's cars. Roosters and hens tearing up the flower beds, I mentioned that. They go out there and scratch all the mulch out and throw it out. Over here at the convention center, they used to scratch it out and throw it out on the sidewalk. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's talk about the rules of how this meeting is going to work. Those of you that have come in and asked to speak, we have your name and address and so we have a way of contacting you if we need to follow up, so I want you to know that. At this time, we have 11 people signed up that would like a change of the ordinance in some form or fashion. And we have 12 people signed up that are in favor of keeping everything the way it is. And that may not be an exact... You're allowed to speak however you want when you get your time. We are going to allow each person to have five minutes. Mayor Protem Schiff is extremely excited to be the five-minute monitor. And what we're going to do for fairness is hear from people who want to keep things the same. We'll hear one person and then we'll hear one person that's against. And I'll go back and forth from one list to the other until we've heard from everyone. If you have... If you're done with your speaking before your five minutes, we're going to the next person. Again, council's not going to be engaging a whole lot because we're trying to gather information. So, everybody okay? All right, we are going to start with on the list of who is in favor. And the first person to speak is Kevin Moby, I believe, is the correct way. And so you'll know when they get close to the end of their five minutes, the next person to speak will be John Comback. Comback, and I apologize in advance if I'm not doing good on names. So Kevin, you are up. And I need you to come to the microphone. So that... And I would... The microphone will move around. Please get it in front of you because otherwise there's folks in the audience that can't hear you and that nobody at home can hear you at all. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, thank you for allowing us this forum. My name is Kevin Moby. I live on the corner of Spring and Jefferson. And I've broken down my comments into three sections because on the card it said, "Come with a solution, not just a problem." So I've worked on a solution as well. First of all, I would like to say on Troy's presentation, I'm not sure if he depicted the Chicken Sanctuary in full accuracy. I believe in the ordinance it stretches from Farm Street to Chestnut Street, from Highway 95 to the tracks. I believe that's the actual... And the reason I bring it, I'm not nitpicking, is because of part of my thought process is regarding that entire area, not just the street. So, okay. I reside in the historic district. Okay, the problem. I think we should focus on the fact that the issue that needs to be dealt with here is the feral chickens that wander freely around town, not the domestic flocks that reside in the several traditional backyard coops that are in this area. I think if you get rid of the coops, you're not going to get rid of the feral chickens, which are a problem. That doesn't address the problem. If you travel to any other town in the country, you will see backyard chicken coops, but you will not see scores of feral chickens running the streets. However, if you come to Bastrop, the town that is the home of an official Chicken Sanctuary, you do see scores of feral chickens. I think it is obvious that we have a chicken-related issue because of the Chicken Sanctuary. I think the cause. Okay. Not picking on anybody, but I believe the city of Bastrop brought this problem upon itself and it is a direct result of two major actions that have been taken in the past few years. The first was to create a Chicken Sanctuary to protect historic Farm Street chickens and not plan it or fund it or manage it to the necessary degree. The second was to build the Bastrop Convention Center within the confines of this same protected chicken's habitat. And in the process, they built a giant parking lot that eradicated a large percentage of the protected chickens' habitats of fields and trees. What is now parking lot used to be fields and that's what I believe that's where the chickens used to take sanctuary. Chickens are simple creatures. They need just three things to thrive: food, water, and a safe place to roost. If these things are removed, they will go elsewhere to find them. The Farm Street chickens have simply ventured deeper into our downtown neighborhoods in an effort to survive. Obviously, a successful strategy at this point. The solution. My opinion is I believe the solution to this problem comes in two parts. The first would be to invest in the Farm Street Chicken Sanctuary and return it to an environment where chickens want to be again. We can do this in a creative and effective way that could attract not just chickens, but visitors who might enjoy the spectacle of these birds. I think the city should consider developing part of the convention center perimeter and small part of the parking area back into a chicken-friendly place with native plants, feeding stations, water resources, and a creatively designed roosting area for the chickens. I think we could also maybe think about including picnic tables and information kiosk for humans so people like to come and look at chickens. I think that with some creative thinking, consultation of experts, and the support and participation of local residents, this could be achieved cost-effectively with positive results for the city. Secondly, I don't think there's a huge chance that we're going to, at this stage, eradicate all of the feral chickens entirely from the downtown area that is not the sanctuary. But I don't think we're going to be able to get rid of them all. Oh, thank you. And I think with proper management, I think we can take away enough of them to where there's still some for people to enjoy and not so many has to be a nuisance to the people who don't like them.
Thank you, Mr. Moby. John Comback?
Comback.
And then the next person to speak will be Jane Campos.
City Council, Mayor, City Manager. I represent the HJJ Properties and they own approximately 16 acres on Farm Street bounded by what is supposed to be Chamber Street back to Cedar Street. There's also a creek that runs along the one side of it. HJJ is considered the highest and best use of the property is residential development. It's in the city limits. They recognize that the ordinance is there, but we are opposed to the ordinance as it currently written for a couple of reasons. In the letter that we received, it said approximately 4.9 acres of this property is in the Chicken Sanctuary. I don't know which 4.9 acres that is. So one of the things that I would like council to consider is defining a clear area of where this Chicken Sanctuary is and where it exists. The letter just says vicinity of Farm Street. I don't know what vicinity means and it's hard for anybody to come in and say, "Well, here's where it starts and stops." Another thing, you know, is health and safety. I mean, Mr. Walters did mention some of the things. Chickens can be rather aggressive and mean at times. If you've never been around them, you don't want to make one mad. They can cause quite a bit of damage. They also carry diseases now. And for people that have chickens in the coops that are abiding by those rules, these feral chickens can transmit diseases that may be an impact to them. There's also, like I said, as mentioned, the harm to humans and property. Another concern that we have is if they're truly feral chickens. That means they're wild animals. As wild animals, we need to, or we would like the city to look at, are we doing enough to make sure that the constituents and the members of the community aren't contributing to the problem by feeding those animals? In most cities around the country, even smaller ones, if, you know, you have deer coming in, deer are the best example. You can't set a corn feeder up in your front yard because of the nuisance that it causes. And so we'd like the City Council to do that. The definition of free range. One of our concerns is also understanding that this is a historic flock of chickens. How is that being monitored to make sure that no one is turning chickens loose, dumping chickens, allowing stray chickens to join these flocks? Is there any type of program in place to make sure that that's monitored so that if the flock is growing naturally? Or is it being added to by negligent people in the community? You know, another one is the cost to the city, liability. If these chickens are truly attacking people, who's responsible for that? They are wild animals in the city under the protection of the city. Again, maybe that needs to be looked at. Another term that's in the ordinance is to intentionally kill a chicken is prohibited. I think what the council meant when they passed that is someone going out and taking care of a problem by themselves. But if I hit that chicken with my car, have I just violated that ordinance? Define what you mean by that. Again, this is... The plan is developed this for residential purposes. We are working with the city. The creek or the branch that runs on the side of it, we're working with the city to get a drainage study on that. It's likely that a lot of that property will be undevelopable because it's either in a flood plain or the engineers, the city, won't approve that. One of our solutions is if the city wants to create a green belt, we would be happy to talk to the city about potentially coming to an agreement for that area that is not developable in order to create an area that is specifically set aside for the chickens outside of public streets so that there is, as mentioned before, a true wild area for these birds to exist. Basically, we all post the ordinance as it is written. We feel it's vague and there are a lot of loopholes in it that allow people to do some things that may or may not be the intention of the ordinance. Again, we'd like to see the ordinance eradicated or have changed to be a part of that so that we can come up with a solution that benefits the entire city and not just one area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Comback. Ms. Campos, and I should have clarified this before we started. There is another person who has signed up and they have given their minutes to Ms. Campos. So she's going to be given 10 minutes, but that's two of the spots. And the next person to speak will then be... And it's either Kathy or Catty Albers? Okay, okay. All right, Ms. Campos, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm glad that I have a chance to talk about the chickens in Farm Street. My name is Jane Campos. I've lived here 57 years on Farm Street. Chickens were here before I was here. And it is a very large... They have a very large economic impact to the city that is positive. They've been recognized as the famous Farm Street Chicken Sanctuary in the Explorer Bastrop County paper. There's 15 places to visit in small-town Texas. National recognition, the Wall Street Journal, the Colleen Daily Herald, the Texas Country Reporter, Texas Monthly, and is promoted by ABC in Houston as a road tripper place to come. So it's bringing people to Bastrop. We see them every day, asking where the chickens are and when they could see them. Unfortunately, most of them are there in the evenings when the chickens have gone to roost. Now, I have a lot of... I've got a plan that I think could work. I don't know how, what the council thinks or anything else. But the flood changed Farm Street forever. We are in a flood zone. We are totally in a flood zone. So the chickens, being smarter than the people that are on Farm Street, they moved across the tracks to higher ground because there's no place for them to go. So the convention center affects it. I have a neighbor that takes care of the chickens, that waters them at the convention center, feeds them, makes sure that they're taken care of, also buries the ones that people run over and the kids that are hot riding down the street, buries them, doctors them if they're injured, does whatever needs to be done. There's three people that are elderly, I would consider, that are having to take care of most of the problems so the city doesn't have a plan in place. And the other gentleman that spoke, they had some good solutions also. I was thinking that we have lots of organizations that have to do community service and whatever or have organizations like the 4H, the FFA, the Boys and Girls Clubs, the Scouts. They could all have fundraisers to raise money so that they could get monies to pay for the feed for the chickens and they could each take a week out of a month. It's not like they'd have to do it all the time. It would give them something that they are giving back to Bastrop, maybe build roofs, maybe the FFA can build some feeders or whatever you want to have out there for them. I think that that would help. The lots on Farm Street are just that, farm lots. If you look at the city thing, they are farm lots. They're not residential lots. They're farm lots. And that means that you can have livestock and they are on both sides of the street. So that presentation that Troy Walters gave is what the city has written down, but these are farm lots and there are farm animals on those lots. I would think that if the people in Bastrop that have a problem with the chickens and have had a problem with the chickens, they need to voice their opinion and if they don't want the chickens there, have those chickens removed. But in 1990... I mean, 2009, the city had a plan to collect all these chickens and euthanize them. Now, I laughed because I thought that was funny. I wanted to watch them. I was going to sell tickets, have the city come in to catch chickens. This is going to be hilarious. Because you're not going to catch them unless you know anything about them. And I know a lot about the fighting and the chickens in Farm Street. There are people that dump their unwanted roosters of different breeds, farm chickens and game chickens. Game cocks are two different animals. And a Rhode Island red rooster that somebody's raised that bought at Tractor Supply and they didn't want, and they dump them on a street, they're going to go chase somebody. Yeah, that's what they're known for. But you have to realize it's not just the game chickens that are doing this. I feel that we need to have the speed limit changed, have it slowed down. Or speed bumps, I don't prefer to have speed bumps because I don't want to drive over them. I've asked the city, I'm going to talk to the police department, to have a monitor put up there to see the speed that the people are going and have close patrols just last week. Because it's... I have neighbors that are elderly and they... Some of them need more protection than other people in different areas. They may walk out into the street and not realize it. They're not going to... People are flying down the road and I don't want to see somebody get killed or even a chicken. We had a squirrel killed just the other day. And I've seen people come with big sacks and gather them up at the chickens, at the convention center and gather the chickens up, take them home. I guess they're going to eat them. They taste like footballs if you'd like to know what a game chicken tastes like because they are game. Now, the other type of chickens, Rhode Island reds, the Arikana's, all the other breeds of chickens, they're meat chickens. They're not meant for, you know, what they... And we have a plethora of roosters in this town. And they can be relocated, but I guarantee you, if you say that you're going to catch, pick up the roosters and whatever, all the game cock fighters are going to be there. They're going to be there to pick them up because they want to fight them. And fighting is illegal in the state of Texas. And I can guarantee that'll happen. If you don't want hens with eggs, go gather the eggs. When you moved here, did you see that there was chickens on that property when you bought that property? Because they've been here before I was here. They've been here before everybody in this room were here. And you had to have known there was free-ranging chickens. It's been in all the papers. I just gave you a whole long list. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Campos. Ms. Albers? And then the next person to speak will be Michelle Haybeck. Ms. Albers?
I am Catty Albers. I live on Baccon Street. I've lived there for 37 years. There were no chickens when I bought the house. But we do not have the problem as like over on Spring and Spring, further down on the Baccon Street. They haven't ventured at my house. They do come to my house. I put the dog out in the yard and they're gone. I hear them in the front yard. If I'm at home, I go out and I chase the chickens away. Today, when I was taking my dog for a walk, I mean, I couldn't believe the roosters that were crowing. And this was at noon time. And I don't see how the people down there live that live in that further toward Chestnut on Baccon can take all the chicken, the rooster crowing. There's chicken mess on the ground. When I'm walking the dog, I have to make sure. I know I could go a different route, but I'm old school. I go the same route every day. And we have to make sure the dog doesn't eat the chickens. The chicken, not the chickens, he's pretty good about the chickens. He does chase them occasionally, but he chases them out of our yard. But... And one thing I want to make... The other thing I want to really make clear was, I guess it's to another, one of my point, I'm not a very good speaker, but I run around town. I walk around town constantly. And every once in a while, people do stop and ask me for directions. Never once in my years have anybody asked me where this Chicken Sanctuary is. And then another thing, my last point is, the city, the animal coordinator, Troy, needs to realize that people, if they want to have domestic chickens, let them. I have no problem with that in their backyard. We had chickens when our kids were growing up. We kept them in a coop. We had a rabbit. They stayed in the coop. But the people that have domestic chickens, the feral chickens are not coming in their yard because of the domestic chickens. The domestic chickens, I mean, the feral chickens have moved over and I know they're going to keep going over further down Baccon Street and they're going to be in Bill's yard too, I'm sure, shortly. And that's what we have got to stop. And I want them moved back to either the Sanctuary or just start... I don't know what the solution is, but it's not going to get worse. Someone thought this was a cute idea at one time, but it's not cute anymore. They're destroying the yards and people's flower beds and like I said, the eggs on cars or whatever. So I would like them gone. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albers. Michelle Haybeck? And then the next person will be Cindy Arvig.
Hi, it's Michelle Habek. That's okay. Everybody always says it that way. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council Manager. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, citizens of Bastrop. I too, like Kevin Moby, reside at 906 Spring Street, which is on the corner of Spring and Jefferson. And I keep domestic chickens. I am... I've been cited for keeping domestic chickens recently. And I think there is a common misunderstanding because there are quite a number of feral chickens common misunderstanding because there are quite a number of feral chickens that roam in my yard. All of my domestic chickens are kept to the coop, they do not go out ever. But there's quite a number in our yard, and I think that's because I have a lot of native plants, I have a lot of shade, I have a lot of locations where these chickens would naturally want to go. I too believe that the location of the current chicken sanctuary is probably not the most hospitable location for the chickens, and that they are indeed seeking other locations where there is more shade, there are more areas for hiding. So if, if, and I understand that people don't want the feral chickens in their yard, I totally get that, there's a lot more chickens in my yard than I'd like to have in my yard, but that's where they are. They don't chase or ever come after me, my dog also tries to chase them out of the yard all the time, and they come back. So for those neighbors and those citizens who are bothered by the feral chickens, I get it. I'm not here to say, let's keep all the chickens exactly where they are. I do think we need to find a better solution for a sanctuary if there is going to be a sanctuary, and maybe the current location of the sanctuary may not be the best one. So I don't know if there is another location in the city, another piece of property that might have the types of trees or plants or so forth that would host, better host the chickens. I also don't believe that we should be feeding the chickens. I don't feed the chickens, I don't water the chickens. They're feral chickens, they do their own thing. And they're doing it quite well without my help, that's for sure. And other people choosing to feed the chickens, that, that's their own choice. But I think the feral chickens have survived as well as they have thus far on their own, and I would support that. I do agree that there's, there are a lot of roosters. Anytime we find eggs in our yard, they go right into the compost pile immediately. We too have, on a number of occasions, I agree with people driving very quickly, because I'm on the corner of Spring and Jefferson, people drive very, very quickly up Spring Street, and I've picked up a number of injured and dead feral chickens and have discreetly taken care of them for the city because there is no way in which to do that. So I think it would benefit the city to set up a system, I think the ordinance right now, like others have spoken, might be too vague, might be unclear, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to have a chance to speak to everybody, and I would be more than willing to participate in future resolution, solutions down the line. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Arvig. I'm at Cindy Arvig, and then the next person will be Regina Hollard.
Holland, sorry. Hi, can you hear me? So I'm Cindy Arvig, and my husband Larry Hill and I, we are some of the new members to the community, we just came a couple of years ago, and we live on Pecan Street between Farm and Beach, so we are kind of in the middle of where the chickens are moving from, apparently the sanctuary over. And I have to say, when we were first looking at the home, we thought, and I still think, the chickens are charming, I get it, I realize, you know, they've been here and they're a part of maybe what makes Bastrop special for people who've lived here a long time, and maybe a bit of a draw for people coming in. So they were here before us, absolutely true, but it does seem to me that we're getting a lot more chickens as time goes on, and I can't believe that's necessarily good for the chickens either. From what I'm hearing, the roosters seem to be maybe what was an unexpected problem when the sanctuary was done. Again, we're new here, so I'm just learning about it. Certainly for us, the roosters are the quality of life issue because of the constant crowing. Now, we've gotten used to it, we have a fan in our bedroom, that's fine, we can, we can live with it, but it just seems to me it's not doing the roosters any good, it's not doing all of us any good. And perhaps if there was a more established sanctuary area for the chickens, that would be a better solution. It sounds like a lot of people here on kind of both sides of seeming both sides of the issue. I don't know that there's really two sides of the issue, I haven't yet heard anybody that says the chickens need to go, they're completely, we need to get them out of Bastrop because they're ruining Bastrop, nobody's, I've heard saying that, we don't want that. So I think everybody likes the chickens, but maybe the chickens just need to be in a more established area, being better taken care of. Again, it sounds like there was a number of great solutions for making that happen. The roosters seem to be the biggest issue, we've never been attacked, but we love backyard chickens, we love their eggs. So I guess I just wanted to give the viewpoint of somebody new coming into the area, being totally appreciative of the character that maybe the chickens in Bastrop have brung, we've had a lot of conversation with our friends and family about this place we live, but it's hard to live with the feral chickens in a situation that may not be the most ideal living situation for them either as they seek better places to live outside of an established safe zone. That's it.
Thank you very much. Regina is up next, and then the next person will be Jennifer Laisher.
I live on Farm Street, I feed the chickens, my neighbor feeds the chickens.
Ma'am, I need you to speak into the microphone or they can't hear you.
I live on Farm Street, I feed the chickens, my neighbor feeds, waters and feeds the chickens because they're there, and they're there for a reason, and they've been there for a long time. I was raised in the, in the country where we had chickens, but I don't get it, I really don't. The people that came from Austin, did they know that there was going to be chickens?
Ma'am, if you'll please speak into the microphone, they can't hear you.
When they came to Austin, did they not know that we had chickens? No, yes, maybe? That's their problem, not mine.
Thank you, Ms. Laisher.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and City Manager. My name is Jennifer Laisher, and I am against the free-roaming chickens and roosters. I am a homeowner at eleven oh two Jefferson Street and have lived in this home more than twenty years. I have taught at Mina Elementary at the corner of Farm and Hill Street for over twenty years, and have monitored students on the playground at the intersection of Farm and Fayette Street for over twenty years. Based on work and home proximity, I have a good idea of the history of the Farm Street chickens. Currently, most of the free-roaming chickens and roosters have migrated west onto Jefferson and Pecan Street. They are no longer all in the protected zone. So let me tell you what life is like at my home. The free-roaming chickens and roosters are perched on my fence at various times during the day, say around six or eight of them. Roosters fly from my fence to my large live oak tree in the front yard. Roosters fly onto my roof and slide down and around my roof, and roosters fly onto my front porch. Roosters, lots of them, six to eight of them, crow at five AM, seven AM, mid-morning, two in the afternoon, and into the evening. It is extremely loud. There are roosters and chickens in my bushes by the front porch, and they have made a mess of all my flowers and landscaping. Furthermore, chicken poop is everywhere. The excessive noise level is a nuisance, and it's impossible to sit outside on my front porch anymore. Now, my situation might be unique because I do have an urban farm operation next door to me with caged chickens, and it seems that the free-range chickens and roosters are drawn to the urban farm and therefore congregate at my home. This free-roaming chicken situation has gotten way out of control, and the solution is for the city to fulfill obligations stated in our city ordinance and gather up all the free-roaming chickens and roosters and move them to a protected area that will not have an impact on current residents. In closing, the best way to make my point is to invite all of you to walk around the corners of Farm, Jefferson, Spring and Pecan Streets to see firsthand what the situation is like on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laisher. I apologize, I forgot to say who the next person was going to be, it's going to be Darren And after Darren will be Larry Hill.
Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Darren Kestelis, and I have a home at seven oh five Farm Street, and it's just west of the tracks. The cowhouse, as it's commonly been called, has been my family for approximately seventy-five years. I purchased it not twice, not quite twenty years ago. My great-great-grandfather settled in town about eighteen fifty-one. I am in support of either expanding the radius of the chicken sanctuary or at minimum allowing the status quo and current ordinance to prevail. The chickens have roamed the area for quite a while, admittedly more so now than when my dad was alive in the forties and fifties, when there were more coops scattered throughout downtown. The advertisers reported on several efforts the city has embarked upon, including the Farm Code changes, to continue the quality of life and the hometown feel of Bastrop. Removing the chickens or restricting the chickens takes something away from the city and promotes a generic feel. It is fine for the boxed houses that are popping up across the west side of town to have Stepford flavor, and it would not make sense for the chickens to roam the gridded neighborhoods in that area, nor would it make sense for them to roam pine forests due to the peaks, valleys and general terrain. However, Farm Street, F-A-R-M, Old MacDonald had a farm, Farm Street, that says it all, doesn't it? You know, we have a mosquito problem in the area because of the river, and there have been a few cases of West Nile in the, in central Texas. Chickens and bats reduce the mosquito infestation. We know that unlike cows and horses, when chickens eat weeds, they fully digest the seeds so that the rich manure does not promote weed growth and in fact deters it. We know that objective studies exist that chickens have a calming effect in a variety of situations. My neighbors to the west of me at seven oh three Farm and to the east of me at the corner of Farm and Water have authorized me to convey their support for allowing the chicken ordinance to stand, so put three households in the pro-chicken category. Even though we're on the west side of the tracks and have from time to time been awakened by a rooster, and we, probably the most I've ever had is about ten in my yard, we are not part of a group of urban sprawl worrying about things, we are old-town Bastrop, we're mature enough to welcome the eccentric, eclectic flavor of having a nationally-recognized chicken sanctuary. Don't let the next Wall Street Journal article regarding the sanctuary proclaim its demise and the homogenizing of Bastrop into just another suburb. I have four things to offer for moderating the non-problem folks see as a problem, and I'm, now I will acknowledge that there is a problem for some people. When I wrote this, I didn't think that, but I do now. On a slow Twitter feed day, if the national media discovers the sanctuary is in jeopardy, a GoFundMe page to save the sanctuary could be established, and money could be raised to fund a position to manage the more unruly roosters. Three, I skipped the one because that was kind of mean to other people. If the population swells, allow one day a year for a culling of chickens where the public is invited to catch up to X number of chickens and take them home. This would allow families in the area who like the chickens to corral a few and release them after the cold day. Four, almost the entire street is twenty miles per hour heading west past Bastrop ISD Central Office. The school zone ends and a resumed thirty mile per hour sign begins about fifty feet, followed just after that by another sign for twenty miles per hour again. It's really kind of silly, as is the stop sign at Chambers Alley, because it's, it's not a street, okay? Across from the north exit of the convention center parking lot, just bite the bullet and make the whole street from ninety-five all the way down to Fisherman's Park twenty miles per hour, and eliminate the ill-placed stop sign. Having taught driver ed for a long time, I can tell you the stop sign is a poor solution and a bad fit. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Kestelis. Larry Hill is up, and then it will be Pat Crawford. Mr. Hill?
I'm Mayor, Council, thank you very much for the opportunity. I'd like to reiterate what my wife Cindy had said earlier, we came here two years ago, and then I think it was probably the day after, the second day we were here, we went out in the backyard, and our dog was lying in the backyard, and there was a dead chicken next to it, and we thought that we had committed a capital crime. And so we kept this very quiet for a very long time. There's probably a statute of limitations, I don't know, I hope so. Anyway, it was, the dog's ignorance, I think, we'll blame the dog. Anyway, that was, that was our introduction. We saw the chickens before we came, we, we thought they were charming, and we still do on, on many occasions, but they are growing out of proportion to the area that we have. Two years ago, it was quaint, and two years later, it, there's a lot, there are a lot. So we've seen an increase. So rather than, rather than talk about whether they should be taken or, or should be or shouldn't be, or the ordinance, I guess my thought is, when I, when I drive out through Farm Street, through the sanctuary, I rarely see a chicken out there. I see one or two running across the road or, so there may be places where they're at, I don't know, but I've not seen them, but I see dozens on our street and our corner and in our three-block area on a regular basis. So to offer a solution, I don't know if this would work, I don't know how to do it, I'm not Quint from, from Jaws, I don't, you know, I don't know how to go after, out of this, we need, we need a pipe piper for chickens, I think, but if we could do a catch-and-release program of some sort to, to round up as many chickens as possible, move them to someplace where, and this is where, as a two-year resident, I have no input and no knowledge about, I don't know if it ruins a bloodline or if it's not, you know, if, but if they could be sent someplace where chickens are valued, and, you know, where they could be, where they could still be free-range, but could, you know, lay their eggs and do their thing, I think what would happen was, they would come back, but it would take a couple of years for them to come back, and then two or three, four, five years from now, we'd do it again. You know, it's the chicken roundup, but it's, the idea is that the chickens don't get hurt, but it just reduces the population, because the population is growing, and as far as I can tell, the only thing that's going to slow it down are speeding cars or coyotes, and neither are very great solutions. So that was it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Pat Crawford, and then the next person will be Stephanie Jenkins.
Hi, I'm Pat Crawford. I recognize that chickens can be pesky and they're a nuisance and can be damaging. I do want to say that, again, like everybody else has said, that they were here before we were, before we bought homes in their territory, and then we built the convention center and took up more of their territory, where were they supposed to go? Then we had the flood, they had to move. I don't know how practical it is to talk about relocating chickens, it, you know, they're, they are free-range, I think we've got to do something to thin them out. I do want to support that, remind everybody that we're spending a lot of money in effort to attract people to come here. Our chickens and our chicken sanctuary make Bastrop unique. When we have company from out of town, they're fascinated by our sanctuary. They think it's wonderful that we've incorporated our chickens into our culture. They are kind of fascinated by the way that chickens navigate the traffic on Pecan Street, which is kind of amazing that they survive. There are two, chickens have moved west, there are a lot of roosters. I do understand that, I, some of the suggestions that have been made, we've got to do something about the roosters, I don't know what that is, I recognize that they're a problem, I had some suggestions, but they've already been made, and I just support that we do something, we've got to thin the herd, it's, we've got to manage our wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Stephanie Jenkins, and then the next person, Mary Ellen Arbuckle. Stephanie Jenkins, and then the next person, Mary Ellen Arbuckle.
While you're passing those out, my name is Stephanie Jenkins, and I live at thirteen oh two Pecan. I want to talk about disease, because I'm quite familiar with this. There's a fungus called Histoplasmosis that is found in the feces of chickens, and when the feces are disturbed, airborne spores can be breathed in by humans. The children at Mina School are playing in the chicken feces in the gravel on the playground at Mina, and they're disturbing the soil as they play there, potentially inhaling the spores. And this is a liability for the city and the school. The lack of vision from the previous council as to liability issues shows poor risk management. The handout I just gave you is a picture from eleven seventeen at seven oh nine. It was sent to me by a teacher at Mina that monitors children all the time. The roosters are grabbing the snacks from the disabled children, and that quote there came from that teacher. The cost to thirteen oh two Pecan, I've spent about five thousand dollars on exterminators, repairs to wiring in my car, sealing my garage, and I finally hired a licensed trapper, because one morning I had five raccoons in my backyard during the day. They're nocturnal. When you see them during the day, that's a sign, potentially, of rabies. And in nine days, this trapper trapped nine raccoons. And I attribute that to the fact that the chickens are laying their eggs, and they're a food source for the raccoons, especially along with rats, and we are altering the food chain. I don't know about this historic chicken thing. I don't think there's any factual basis or any evidence for where the chickens have been and how long they've been there. The history of my living at thirteen oh two Pecan, I've lived within two blocks of my present residence in two other houses for forty-four years in central Bastrop, and I've never had a problem with rats, chickens, snakes, raccoons. I had to call 911 because I pinned a chicken snake up on the apron of my house, and I really didn't know how to chop him, and a very nice policeman came and helped me out. Hartford Jenkins had chickens and a vegetable garden in the early nineteen hundreds at this location. There was no HEB. He fed many people, he knew exactly how many roosters and hens he could have, so he called the chickens as needed to control the population by wringing the neck of the chicken and putting it in Beulah Alice's pot for dinner. And while Hartford probably did have to deal with coyotes, he had long guns that he used on Pecan Street. Those of us bearing the burden of these chickens have no means to remove them. We can't use guns, and animal control will not come. There's a myth on social media that the coyotes are controlling the chicken population, but I have to tell you, in my forty-four years of living in Bastrop, I've never seen or heard a coyote running down Pecan Street. I had to remove my bird feeders on my patio because the chickens flew over the six-foot privacy fence to eat the seed. You can see the photo in the handout, there's a myth that they're not able to fly over a privacy fence, but you can see one sitting on my fence. Property rights. I was taught that property rights are a Fifth Amendment right, and that your right to own chickens should end at my property line. Protecting chickens in a certain area without the ability to keep them in that area is a taking by the city of my property. There's an expectation that if you live in a city and you pay city taxes on top of school and county taxes, that more restrictions are commonly found to protect the value of the homes and property, as opposed to living in the county, where the restrictions are less prohibitive. There is no homeowners association in this county that doesn't restrict livestock, not only from roaming free in the range of the association, but also from individual homeowners who might want them on their property. The validity of the image of chickens drawing people to Bastrop. BISD is finding it difficult to compete with school districts in our district on many levels. Better-paying jobs, a highly-educated workforce, higher test scores, strong economic environments are the reasons why businesses and individuals invest in a community, not by how many chickens are walking around the administration building. Bastrop has real problems that are in need of solution: housing, better-paying jobs, improved school scores, wider tax base. And these are the kinds of things that we should be thinking about as you deal with the chickens. If you live far away from this area and you like this, you are not bearing the same burden that the rest of us are. In conclusion, the sanctuary was a poorly conceived and incredibly imprudent decision by a previous council. It's inconsistent public policy because dogs are not allowed to roam, nor are dogs given asylum in a sanctuary. No thoughtful consideration was given to the possibility of chickens overpopulating the center city, and no one considered the possibility that the chickens would not know where the boundaries of the sanctuary were. My only solution is that they need to be removed by any means, possibly a licensed trapper, but I want to see them gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Mary Ellen Arbuckle, and then the next person will be Sherri Gilmore.
Hi there. My name is Mary Ellen Arbuckle, and I live at fifteen oh two Fayette Street. I remember the morning that I stood at the bottom of a tree across the street from me and counted the chickens in the tree, and it was like ticks on a bar. There were like fifteen of them up there. I didn't hear them up there, I didn't know they were up there, until all of a sudden they became visual to me. I am for keeping the chicken sanctuary the way it is, however, I am for more, better, and better management. I do feel that the chicken sanctuary... When I moved here, I've only been here three years now, and when I moved here, I looked up and I saw the chicken sanctuary, and I saw that it was close to me, and I was thrilled because it is charming. And the first morning in my house, when I woke up, and I went outside and I saw three chickens standing out there, it was wonderful for me. I'm a city girl, I'm from Houston, Texas, so this is all new to me. If I move to New England, I'm going to love the snow. They hate it. If they move to Texas, they're going to hate the heat, you know, and so it's kind of like that for me. I will say that we need to figure out a way to manage the flock, whether through tourism dollars, setting up a foundation for the chicken sanctuary, to where there is somebody that's actually monitoring and keeping them. My understanding, since moving here, is that the chickens are only protected on the part between the railroad tracks and ninety-five along Chestnut Street. There have been times when I've noticed suddenly that all the chickens in the rest of the town just disappear, and I've thought that it was coyotes. We do regularly have coyotes along Fayette Street. So I've assumed that there was a culling going on. I've never asked, because it's one of those things I'd rather not know. I recognize there may be a need for it, and it's just better for me not to know. The other thing is that there is a walking trail that's planned, and maybe to have the walking trail go through the chicken sanctuary to where that's kind of a destination along the walking trail, on the way to the parks, on the way to the movie theaters, and so on. I think that there's a lot... I'm so glad I came tonight, because I'm for the chickens, but hearing everybody, you know, the problems that other people are having, the trains are right across the street from me, I don't hear them, but other people do, and I recognize that, and so that's a problem. I like the train. So I don't want to impose my will on the community, but I would like for us to try and work together to come up with a way that maybe we can figure out a way to integrate it into our community in a way that's less invasive to others. The other thing I want to say is that, in fact, to me, the ducks and the geese at Fisherman's Park are more of a nuisance than anything, and they're very aggressive. I don't know if you've ever been chased by a goose, but there's a reason that it's called being goosed, and that's what they do. Let's see. So the one other thing I would like to bring up is, while we're getting rid of, you know, managing the chickens, can we figure out a way to manage the gophers? Because I have so many holes in my door that that's where my problem is. So I really appreciate that you guys are doing this. There is the original chicken ranch, or what I've always assumed is, is up for sale, maybe that's a possibility, and there's this great thing, it's called Chicken Wire. You could put chicken wire around the chicken ranch, and, you know, I think LaGrange lost its chicken ranch, but that's another story. So anyway, thank you very much for your time and for considering this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's Sherri Gilmore, and then after Sherri will be Bill Hanson.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Sherri Gilmore, I live at eleven oh two Pecan Street. I moved to Bastrop from Cedar Creek around two years ago. When I lived in the country and I occasionally drove down Farm Street, I thought the chickens were picturesque and quaint. However, when I moved onto Pecan Street, my feelings about the chickens changed somewhat. For my first Christmas in my new old home on Pecan Street, my family came to visit. Some of them stayed with me, and some of them stayed across the street at the Pecan Street Inn. We had a great holiday, we walked around downtown, shopped, ate in the restaurants, walked in the Riverwalk, but all of my relatives complained about being awakened all night by crowing chickens, all except my eighty-nine-year-old mother. She grew up on a farm, and she loved the chickens. So a couple of years later, this year, just recently, I broke my wrist, my mother and my sister came to visit me and help me through, after my surgery, and they've both been here many times, but this time, they complained, both of them, about being awakened all night long by the roosters. They crow day and night, all the time. I can't wake up in the night or be at home in the day without hearing them crowing. So they also destroy my flower beds, and they do fly over tall fences. They seem to be more numerous than any other bird on Pecan Street. And I know their habitat on Farm Street was disrupted, and well-meaning people do feed them, I know they mean well by feeding the chickens, but the chickens are on the move, and they're moving west, and I think they'll just continue to move through downtown. The other point I wanted to make is that feral chickens and free-range chickens are, in my mind, two different things. Free-range chickens are lured back to a coop at night by their owners. They're farmed chickens, but they're allowed to eat out in the grass during the day, but they do go back to the coop at night. Feral chickens are wild, and they eat and roost where they can. What we have are feral chickens. A little research into other feral chicken populations revealed that they just continue to proliferate and spread. We're not the only area that has feral chickens. New York, California, Hawaii, Key West, they've all had their problems with feral chickens, from incessant crowing to the messes they leave everywhere. Key West hired a trapper to remove hundreds of chickens to a sanctuary in upstate Florida, and in some places in Hawaii, the Humane Society's budget was increased to deal with the problem. So my proposed solution is this. The city of Bastrop could hire a contractor to trap feral chickens that are outside the chicken sanctuary and humanely remove them to the farms that may want them, or back to the sanctuary. This may have to be done annually, or biannually, or on an ongoing basis, I'm not sure how that would, how a chicken roundup, like someone suggested, would work. And also, I believe that if some of the habitat was restored on Farm Street, and if people outside the sanctuary area would stop feeding them, maybe they would be more likely to stay inside the sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilmore. Bill Hanson, and then Sean Anthea, we'll be next. Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, so, Bill Hanson, I live on Pecan Street with my wife. We moved here five years ago, and we knew what we were getting into, we saw the chickens, we thought they were charming, like most people did. So we were for them, we have a good time with them. There are some around our house. I guess we've gotten immune to them. I don't hear them at night. I think, and both of us think, that what they do is, they do their thing. That's what they do, and we... I've never been attacked, I've never been chased by a rooster or a hen. I will say that when they do have their babies, and we try to take the eggs so the babies don't come, most of them don't live, because the hawks come down, and they pick them up like a fighter jet. We've seen that many times. Those around our house, I think there are a few more. I agree with Larry, I drive up and down Farm Street to go to ninety-five every day, and I hardly see any down there. I think there are a few more roosters, the suggestion to maybe thin them out, they might be the noisier ones. I know the hens don't make the noise that bother people, but I think that, I don't have a major solution. My major goal is to say that we're for them, they don't hurt our land, they don't hurt us. We have a couple of feral cats, and they seem to coexist, leave each other alone, but I think thinning out maybe the roosters is a solution. I don't know how you do it, what you do, but anything that we can do to help, we're here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hanson. Sean, and I... Well, I'm not used to...
Sean Anthea Pledge.
Wow. The pledge didn't make it.
My real name is Sean Anthea, but I'm Mrs. Pledge because of all the children and to all of you.
Well, I apologize, Mrs. Pledge.
That's okay, that's okay. I live at fifteen oh seven Pecan. I own a business with my husband, the Pecan Street Inn, at ten ten Pecan, in the epicenter of chicken land. For me, this is primarily an economic issue. I just want to read a couple of excerpts from guest books that are in my Pecan Street Inn. Here's one from October thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, a year ago. There's little pictures of chickens right here, and it said, "Fun stay, tasty breakfast, but the four-thirty a.m. alarm clock suck." Here's another one. "Thanks so much, wonderful hospitality, la-la-la. P.S., what are our roosters' names?" By "our rooster," she's referring to the roosters that roost in the trees outside the rooms at my Pecan Street Inn. And then this, this one was from two weeks ago. "This is a lovely place to stay, but the roosters are a menace. If you want to sleep, thanks for the nice breakfast." I have seen my business, for whatever reasons, there are lots of probably reasons, but if you go onto TripAdvisor and you look up Pecan Street Inn, people are not happy. I've directly lost money from people who have booked a two- or three-night stay, they get up the next morning, they say thank you very much, and they leave. And I'm not in a position to not charge them, because I don't want them writing more rooster things on TripAdvisor. So for me, I have to echo what Stephanie Jenkins said. I consider this to be a problem from the city's standpoint. You're depriving me of my income by not controlling this population. I would just ask you to close your eyes and envision Main Street overrun by chickens, the way Pecan and Spring and Jefferson, and that's the way they're moving. So although I'm a charming chicken person, I think they're charming, I am absolutely, totally against the feral roosters. I think if you have chickens in coops, I have the most beautiful chickens that live across the street from me, and a couple of geese, and they're fat and happy, I've never heard a peep from them. We have lots of places on Pecan Street where people are keeping chickens in coops, that's not an issue. I think domesticated... I think domesticated chickens, whatever that means, I'm sure it's technical, is fine. But feral chickens, chickens who, that are roaming the street, that are out of control, are, we absolutely have to do something about it. It's not cute anymore for all of us who live in that area and do business in that area. And I think the threat to our economy downtown is serious. There's also the health issue, there's also, you know, there are a number of other issues. I, I don't really know what the solution is, because I think if the chickens moved from the sanctuary because of the flood to get to higher ground, how are you going to convince them to go back? I, I mean, maybe you manage it at great, uh, taxpayer dollars that are coming from me. Um, if you, if you, what, are you going to have a code enforcement officer that drives around the chicken sanctuary boundary? I think that's unrealistic. I think the number one thing is get rid of the roosters. If you don't have roosters in town, you don't have a problem. And you don't need roosters, as I understand it, to have eggs. Um, so that's the number one thing. Get rid of the roosters now. And then some sort of long-term, if the people who want to keep the roosters on Farm Street want to keep the roosters, then they should have them in a very large coop, if that's what it is. I think the, um, the problem is one that should be managed. Period. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pledge. And I apologize, I forgot to announce the next person. Um, it's going to be Darwin French, and then after Darwin French will be John Thrift. And just in case you were wondering, after those two gentlemen, there's six more. So, that's where we are. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mayor, Council members. This is Freddie the Freeloader from Farm Street. This is a rooster. We keep saying the roosters. There are hens down there also, and we all forget about the hens. And we keep mentioning all this stuff about chickens that are up on, uh, Pecan Street, Jefferson Street. Well, if I remember correctly, the mayor, one of the past ones, had five or six of the chickens brought from Farm Street up there to his house and turned them loose. And that's why they're up on that area. If you know anything about chickens, you'll know that the, the rate of the gender separation, it's about three to one, about three roosters per ever hen. And so, you are going to have to have some type of a system set up where you can thin the roosters out. People talk about driving down Farm Street and not seeing the chickens. There's no bugs out there on that cement and pavement. They're over in the back of my place, they're over in the back of the school, up by the railroad tracks, in the backyards of Mrs. Narrows. They're back there eating, and they don't have to have feeding. Some people enjoy feeding them, enjoy getting them up there. My mother-in-law lived there since she was born, and their house was there in nineteen thirteen. It was moved up to the street. And she would gripe about those chickens digging holes in the yard, and she'd go down there every week and buy a fifty-pound bag of chicken scratch and grit it out. You know, you, you, you will create your own problems. The chickens that are up in the other areas, the people don't realize the other things that are there with those chickens. You've got skunks that live in the sewers, water drains, and you've got coyotes. I've got coyotes that run right down by my house, Mr. Schitt's house. I know you know that. Mr. Peterson over here, he's got skunks and feral cats, and I'm sure probably a bobcat or two every now and then come down to creek there. We have deer. If y'all don't know, right up in the middle of Cedar, Garfield, and Roosevelt, they come, jump my yard and eat my flowers. We have geese. We have a lot of concerns with these animals. But we do need to get together and make some kind of a effort to set up a good set of rules how to do this, not, not just to kill them all, you know? But I can tell you how to do that. It's really easy. My grandmother showed me many years ago. Two ways, stump and hatchet, or wring your neck. Then you got the hot water, you scald them, pull the feathers off, and cook them for something. So they did. And a few of them you keep in a coop to get the eggs, because I've reached up under them before and pulled out chicken snakes many times. So any of y'all that know anything about these chickens, they're just doing what good God ordered them to do. And if you go in and buy a piece of property, and then you gripe about what was there before you bought the property, shame on you, because you should have done your work. And there's a lot of people that do it. But, uh, I appreciate y'all's time, y'all's effort, but remember this, Farm Street runs clear to the river, and them geese make a mess down there. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. French. Okay, uh, John Thrift, and then, is that where I am? And then it will be, um, Sue Ann Frugé, and she also has donated time from another person. So, Mr. Thrift is five minutes, and Ms. Frugé will have ten minutes.
I don't think it'll take me five minutes. Thank you for having this. It's long overdue. Uh, there's several things that brought out, and I'll just run through that one. You know now that there is a disproportionate number of male feral chickens that run through these neighborhoods, because you heard it, that's the way they are. I saw one hen that hatched out thirteen chickens, and she ended up raising eleven, and ten of them were roosters. I know because they're all over my yard. Uh, we don't feed the chickens, uh, we feed the birds. The birds scatter the bird seed out of the feeders. We have one in the front yard, one in the backyard, and the chickens get the rest. And they're not hard to control. Uh, I have a garden, and I have a fence about that high, plastic netting that goes around it, and I have hoops, and very rarely do they get into the garden beds, they have raised beds, uh, because when I catch one, I traumatize it on purpose. And now, when I walk into my backyard, I have my walking stick, and the roosters take one look at me, and they jump the fence and go somewhere else. And, uh, the other thing I wanted to say is, if you, if you think that you're, and if you think you're going to, uh, solve this problem, I feel sorry for you, because you're not, unless you kill every single chicken in town, except the ones that are in coops. The chickens that are in coops are absolutely no problem, because they're in coops, and they're totally different from feral chickens. I would hate to see a disproportionate amount of tax dollars wasted on a plan to catch or move, or whatever, the roo, you know, the chickens, because I don't think it'll work. Uh, my feeling is that if you get into this process, you have already lost, you just don't know it. You're not going to solve this problem by catching those chickens, and certainly not by relocating them, because if you catch them and turn them loose, they'll be right back. And they know how to get around town, obviously. I've never had a chicken roost in a tree on my property, uh, because I didn't allow them to roost in the trees. I don't have any trouble sleeping, because I don't have any chickens roosting in the trees on my property. And if I did, I have a pair of earplugs right on my nightstand, end of that subject. So, and, uh, they do crow all night, they crow all day. That's how they define their territories. The rooster, the alpha rooster and the subordinate rooster will come into the yard, they'll have four to six hens with them, they go around to eat, they leave. They go over to other people's yards, and they go up and down the street. That's what they do. That's why they're called free range. They are ranging. And, uh, so, uh, we feed the birds, we don't feed the chickens, we don't let them roost in our trees, uh, and the coop chickens are not the problem. And if you take them back to Farm Street, they'll be back in the neighborhood, and they will not stop breeding unless you get rid of all the roosters. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thrift.
John, I just want to thank you for your service. John served on the school board for quite a long time, and I just want you to know that, uh, we appreciate you.
The next person will be Sue Ann Frugé, and then Herb Goldsmith.
Thank you. Obviously, I'm going to be hoarse. Hang on. This is going to be show and tell. Um, and I've heard a lot of interesting suppositions. I live at twelve oh six Pecan Street, which is three houses from the intersection of Farm and Pecan. And the, the chickens weren't issued before the flood. The chickens happily resided in the Oars Yard for many, many years, and when they were being fed on my block, they crossed over and started moving north. Um, so Troy and I met each other two or three years ago, and he informed me, when he came to my house, I live in a small cottage with a very small yard, and when he came to the house, he informed me that these were feral chickens, and that they behaved like any feral animal, like a feral hog. If you frightened them enough, they would stay away, and that's what we just heard earlier. If you frightened them, you will not be, um, burdened with them. So I went out and bought, this is February, you cannot buy a super soaker in February anywhere in a store, so I had to order it. And my theory was, if I came screaming out of a house pumping a super soaker, that finally I would condition them until all I had to do was stick my head out the door and go, "Ah!" and they would leave. But after the first day, I was so exhausted, I decided I could not keep that up. So then I went to Gonzales, where I purchased, and I'm a backup, I love chickens, I grew up with chickens. My job was to collect eggs. Every chicken we ate was from our flock. But my father always cut a chicken with a hook. I call this the Chicken Snatcher. I drove to Gonzales and bought, excuse me, a Chicken Snatcher. These are very wary chickens. You can throw a scratch until you're crazy, and the minute you get out one of these, they're The hens, as well as the roosters, succeeded in eating up all of my faucet covers in February, when you can't buy another one because they're all gone. They also ate up the vent covers on the, my house that kept the pipes from freezing. So you can tell I've spent a great deal of time having to deal with chickens. I have a very personal relationship with them, because it has been intense, and perhaps because my yard is so small. I'm beginning to realize this is actually about two issues. One is about keeping the chickens in the sanctuary, because I love the sanctuary. I bought T-shirts and gave them to friends and always take house guests there. But the second issue is, then what do we do about the existing chickens that are running all over town? Two totally different issues. So the question is, why did the chicken cross Pecan Street? Well, it crossed Pecan Street after all the years of residing happily in the Oars Yard, because food was provided across Farm Street. Uh, this is a picture of my back porch, which is roughly five by eight, with twelve chickens on it, one rainy, rainy day, all pooping. So I would race out, they would run out into the rain, and the minute I came back in the house, they were back up on the porch, pooping. And this is a picture that, I don't know who took this, but Troy brought over the high-tech chicken cage that the city provided, which entailed having a, um, door on it that swung open with a stick under it, and a string that ran to my back door. And so I had to stay at home and listen until I could hear a rooster crowing in the backyard, and then I would creep over, open the door, wait for them to crawl in, come into the scratch, yank the string, pull out the stick, give it a slam shut. Troy would come and empty the cage, and I think we caught, in about a five-day period, I think twenty-one, out of my backyard. And in fact, there's some comments on, is Troy still here?
I'm here.
Do you want me to shut up, Troy?
Pardon?
Of course I can.
Uh, this is a picture of a rooster on my roof, getting ready to roost in the tree above my bedroom. Uh, they're usually multiples, but the three white windows below that rooster is the head of my bed. There's exactly fourteen feet between that fence, which is usually loaded with roosters in the morning, starting at five thirty, or sometimes two thirty in the morning, crowing and clucking. Uh, they also love dirt baths, and they really get into dirt bathing in the spring. So this shows a chicken dirt bathing, and the photo to the right shows me having to pay someone to fill in all of the divots before we could ever mow the grass. This is every spring. Mulch, there is no mulch. I had four inches of mulch in my flower bed, so I would never have to weed anymore. And so it would retain moisture, because I don't have a sprinkling system. There is no mulch, four inches, it's gone. The picture on the left is from the Baptist church, and that's the chunky mulch, and I can imagine the liability issue of having an elderly parishioner break a hip by tripping on that or falling. The one on the right is my driveway, it looks like that all the time. Uh, tried to grow flowers in pots, they're simply edibles. Um, you'll notice I have an egg basket turned upside down on the pansies, because any of them poke their heads through, get eaten immediately, because they are edible. And the begonial, well, it speaks for itself. So I no longer can grow putted plants. This is my back flower bed. To the left is a concrete drainage ditch because of water issues, and it's to keep the water from going into my home. I have had to cover it with plastic, because if I put mulch on it to keep the water from, uh, dirt from filling up the, uh, drain, the chickens simply scratched the mulch into the drain and filled it up, and I had water issues. So it's been like this for three years. It's very attractive. And here are some of my fine feathered friends in my very small backyard. And my beloved cat, that was carried off because of all the predators that have followed the chickens into our area. A gray-horned owl picked him up, fought his way free. Five hundred dollars later, he died from an infection. And this is, I spent two hours yesterday with some lovely women from Farm Street, who gave me some real insights into what was currently happening on Farm Street, and the fact that there weren't as many chickens, and the things that they really wished the city would do to help them. And the other thing I found interesting is that people are dumping chickens on Farm Street, and I did not know this. Hens don't lay eggs. The production rate drops off for a hen at about five years, and they usually stop laying completely by about eight. But they live to be fourteen to eighteen years old. So a lot of these over-the-hill hens are, are being dumped on Farm Street. None of us ever anticipated that, as well as some very aggressive roosters. So let me tell you what I can't do. As a citizen living on Pecan Street, this is what I can't do. I can't drive safely down Pecan Street anymore, because of all, and within the last four weeks, it's constantly hanging. I don't know what the deal is, but they're everywhere. I can't sleep, I have to sleep with earplugs. I've had to have all the windows in my bedroom replaced, because there were twelve-pane windows, and there were five windows in the bedroom, which meant there were sixty panes. So for two thousand... So for $2,000, I've had to have every window replaced so I could sleep. I don't have clean porches or patio. I can't use mulch to eliminate weeding or to hold moisture. I can't plant flowers. I can't mow the lawn easily. Actually, somebody gave me another five minutes, Gary. I can't minimize watering my lawn, and I can't own a pet.
Ms. Frugé, he started with 10, so I need you to wrap up.
Okay, but it was given to me by Kelly. And who else do you have?
Okay, sorry.
That's good. And what is also happening is we have created imbalance in nature. Because Stephanie's nine raccoons in one backyard. The hawks are everywhere. One attacked Brian. A kitten bloodied his head, attacked him twice. The owls are proliferating. This particular owl, I knew where this owl lived because I could hear her. And now she's had a hatch because I can hear them. And then three weeks ago, as I opened my shades on a Sunday morning, here was a coyote slowly meandering down the sidewalk on Pecan Street and turning left onto Farm. So what's happened is since the chickens have moved this direction, still have the predators. When they were living on Farm Street, this is what, on the north side of Farm Street, is all this overgrown brush, lots of protection for the chickens. They can roost in the trees. They're not as vulnerable. But now that they have been encouraged to move into Pecan Street because of being fed, that, I think, is probably what initiated the move. And I'm wondering if there's some way to stipulate that if you're going to feed chickens, you need to coop your chickens. That might be a possibility. The other interesting possibility, as everyone suggested, is quote rounding up chickens. Well, as soon as people, friends and random acquaintances, determined that there were chickens being trapped on my property, they started calling. Because people in the country don't want a chicken that you have to coop. These are feral chickens. They roost in trees. You never have to coop a feral chicken. And they were begging for chickens. And at one point, I think this was considering buying a gun with a net, which was about a $1,500 item. If we offered $5 a head per chicken and offered it to a civic group, like the Boy Scouts or the YMCA or some group where they could use it as a fundraiser to catch the chickens. And there was an article about Carlos Liriano's son being the one who could catch the chicken that was on Church Street when no one else could. It would be a great fundraiser for a civic group. It would provide what we need from the standpoint of eliminating the overabundance of chicken in residential area. And let me think, what else? Oh, and I put a number to what it is it cost me. And to date, the chickens have cost me $3,175. And I have it itemized, if anyone's interested. In fact, the color gun man was at my house asking about the chickens last week. And when I said that there was a possibility that we would be giving some away, he was beside himself. Yes, yes. I mean, if I didn't have to coop chickens, I would be so happy. So it is viable. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Frugé. I appreciate it. All right. Herb Goldsmith is up next. And then I'm going to just run through all of it. It'll be Herb Goldsmith, Susan Long, Deborah Johnson, Stefan Lubinski? Is that it? And Glenn Johnson. Mr. Goldsmith.
Don't start yet. Okay. I'm going to speak more of the policy issue. We have a huge policy issue before us tonight. The issue tonight is not about free-range chickens. Free range has been defined. These are not free-range chickens, none of them. What we're talking about is feral chickens. In our own ordinance, it is described as an animal that is not domesticated, cultivated, intentionally bred, or generally approachable and/or an animal that is not readily able to be handled by humans. So essentially, any chicken in Bastrop that is non-maintained in a coop is a feral chicken. We also describe protected animals in the ordinance. Chickens that are not owned by an individual and that generally run at large in the vicinity of Farm Street for a distance of blank feet between Highway 95 and the railroad tracks, et cetera, are protected. Essentially, feral chickens are protected by the city within that specific area. I would dare say as a result, city government is responsible for this protected population. We also have in the ordinance the description of a public nuisance animal. Any animal other than a protected animal, which means the ones on the sanctuary, that unreasonably annoys humans, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which these chickens do. And according to the ordinance, these feral chickens are a public nuisance because they meet at least the following conditions. They are at large. They damage, soil, dispoil, defecate on private property other than the animal owner's property or on public property. Excessively make disturbing noises, including but not limited to continued and repeated crowing. They didn't say that, but that's what it is. And they produce odors and unclean conditions sufficient to annoy persons living in the vicinity of the animals. Then in our ordinance, we already have restrictions on keeping fowl. The animals or poultry fowl in question are being kept... You cannot keep an animal or an animal can't be in the neighborhood is being kept in any manner or location that results in noises, odors, pests, and other conditions associated with the animals or poultry fowl that would annoy, offend, or disturb the reasonable sensibilities of residents or persons occupying or visiting the private residences. It is ironic that one could say the city allowed the sanctuary, did not contain the feral chickens in the sanctuary and therefore are in violation of their own ordinance because we let them go. Chickens have a high reproductive rate and will expand exponentially. The problem's going to get much worse. Calculations show that if one hen lays five eggs and three-quarters of these chicks survive, with four to five being female, a single hen can produce 1,024 hens in 100 weeks. Feral chickens should never be fed or otherwise encouraged. Furthermore, as many of the citizens attested today, the return on investment for these feral fowl is in the red. They're surely costing the city and citizens more money than they generate in tourism, which I think is about zilch. Renters have left due to the noise. But who knows how this could impact residential home sales in the future? The ordinance, as it's written, would take care of everything. You could have a little sanctuary experiment, but you would get rid of all the feral chickens outside the sanctuary. Your ordinance provides that right now. And that's why I was a little bit upset with the postcard talking about free-range chickens, confusing language. The agenda having confusing language. And then coming in on the comments having confusing language. But at least we had the opportunity to speak. I do have some suggestions for you. I have the Country of Bermuda, right? Country of Bermuda is getting rid of all their chickens. It has hurt them so bad. They have the Feral Chicken Management Plan. It's 50 pages. It outlines everything, why you do it, how you do it, what works, what doesn't work, what's feasible, what's infeasible, et cetera. So here's your reading. And I think it will be very helpful.
Do you know where did I step from?
Bermuda.
Bermuda.
The government of Bermuda.
I thought you said Buda.
Oh, no, no, no.
Can we have that?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, I'll send you the PDF.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsmith. And Mr. Johnson, I'm not repeating your comments. Okay, Susan Long.
Hi, I'm Susan Long. I'm a lifetime resident of Bastrop. I live in a two-story historic home on Hill Street and the corner of Buttonwood. And I've had frequent flyers from the chicken sanctuary visit my property. I have found them very soothing and calming to what used to be my high blood pressure. And there's just something about looking out my kitchen window while I'm washing dishes and see these, you know, wonderful hens out there. Now, I am in agreement. There is a problem on Pecan Street. So all of you that live on Pecan Street, I understand, I hear your problems. And like any herd or any group of animals, they need to be managed. I don't have all the answers. But I will tell you this. I have had a B&amp;B, a bed and breakfast at my home for several years. Quite some time back, first rattle out of the bag, I started having the roosters roosting in my tall trees in my yard at night. I never had any problems with my guests complaining because I took the advice of a wonderful, very wise elderly gentleman who is now deceased. He said, "Look, you don't need to put up with them crowing at night. They don't need to be roosting in your trees. All you got to do is get a slingshot and some marbles." He said, "I'll loan it to you." I did that for about a week. I have never had another single rooster roost in my trees or in my yard. So I would suggest a lot of you, go to Tractor Supply, wherever, get yourself a slingshot and some good old-fashioned marbles. These do not kill the chickens. But let me tell you, the roosters, they don't like it, and they won't come back. So now, the other thing is we do have some natural predators. We don't like to think about coyotes running through our streets wild. But, you know, we are close to... We still have some beautiful countryside nearby, pastoral areas, thank goodness. But we do have hawks, and we do have owls. And I walk my dog three times a day. I walk by Fayette Street, and I walk down Farm Street. And, you know, I do the whole thing. Down Fayette and all those little short streets, Catawba and, you know, Buttonwood and all that that run right into the railroad tracks. I guarantee you, there's lots of owls, and there's lots of hawks. They do control the young chicks when they're born over there. I can't speak for Pecan Street. I doubt if we have that many hawks and owls over there, but I'm sure we have some, okay? But they are natural predators. And I notice how the little broods that follow mama hen around each morning when I'm walking my dog, they get smaller and smaller and smaller in number. So I know the snakes or the flying creatures are taking care of them. I do agree, again, the people on Pecan Street, you have a problem. And I know that needs to be addressed. But I do think that people do... They're fascinated, people from the big cities that want to see the chicken sanctuary. I would never do away with that. That's going to need some management and some planning and redoing and whatever. It's all asphalt now and concrete. That's the problem. And they've moved over where people have fed them. I don't blame them for going there. But anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. I think there are lots of tourists that come here that do think the chicken sanctuary is a very unique thing, and they want to see them. And they're just thrilled to see them, you know, roaming a yard every now and then. But when you have herds of them, it's time to manage. And I don't have all the answers. Try the slingshot and the marbles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Okay, I've got Deborah Johnson as the next speaker. Then there'll be Stefan Lubinski, and I am so sorry if I'm not doing your name correctly. And then Glenn Johnson. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I live at 1109 Pecan Street, which is the corner of Farm and Pecan. And on that map, if all those little black chickens, if you drew them and connected them, I think they would all land right in our yard. I think we're the epicenter of it. And we moved here from Austin via a bit of time in River Crossing, which was a neighborhood of 2 to 16-acre places. And the homeowners association did not allow you to have fowl at all, period, for understood reasons. I did know, we did know when we bought the house, that they were chickens. We kind of thought they were cute and quaint. And in fact, the previous owner gifted us with a shovel to scoop the poop off the sidewalk. But since I've lived there, I learned very quickly that our house had a severe rodent problem. I called the pest control person who had taken care of that house for several years and was told by him that we would continue to fight rodents and continue to have fleas and have to treat them as long as there were chickens. That there is a chain that's part of it. This is my last quarterly bill. It was $730.68. Now, I live in an old wooden house, so yes, that does include some termite inspection. That includes spraying for roaches and spiders. But it also includes spraying my yard for fleas and treating the house for rodent prevention. For the amount of poison that was gone, they're still there. They're still coming in and eating. So what he told me was that... So not only is this a financial issue that we're facing every three months, but chickens carry fleas, lice, and parasites. And when they do this, which they do all the time, those fleas, lice, and parasites are going out into the environment. And we've already heard what their poop can cover. And there's a reason why growers who have chicken houses wear respirators when they go into those chicken houses. It's dangerous. It's not healthy. Rodents like the chicken's food source. So if you have people in the neighborhood who are feeding birds or feeding chickens, then they're also feeding the rodents. And of course, we know what eats rodents. Those are snakes. So as we have all these reports of the big, large snakes that we're finding in our yards, the chickens are part of that. We have... And then, of course, you have the raccoons and the possums and the snakes who like to eat the eggs. So they're coming for that as well. We have a tree in the front that usually, easily, a dozen of them are in there. I didn't know about the slingshot, something to try. But we have had the tree people come out to trim the tree limbs up as far as they could without causing damage to the tree. If we lost that tree, that would be a financial depreciation on the property value. And then there's sleep deprivation. I wear earplugs, and I have a pillow over my head. And at 3:00 in the morning, a crowing rooster sounds somewhat like a demon. And I'm usually awake at least two out of three nights, at 3:00 to 3:30. So it's a quality of life. I don't sit on my front porch because it stinks out there. With that many chickens in the tree, it stinks. I also get eaten up by the fleas that I spend a whole lot of money trying to kill. So it's a quality of life. It's actually a quality of life thing for the chickens, too, because I've kind of watched the social habits of chickens a lot. And when you have more roosters than you have hens, they're actually pretty cruel to the hens. They're mean to the hens. And hens do make noise, a lot of noise when they lay an egg or when they're trying to entice that rooster. They're rather noisy. And a year ago, we had more... We still have more roosters than we had hens, but we had a lot more roosters. Unfortunately, a lot of the groups of eggs that have hatched have survived. They didn't all get killed off. They didn't all get killed off. So, now, most of the roosters have two or three hens following them around and they're pretty happy. But that means we're gonna have even more little chickies running around. So, it is, there's a population explosion happening. Um, so they're cute and they're quaint and they're charming and they're noisy and nasty and a nuisance. And you've heard all the solutions and it's your job, you got elected, you get paid the big bucks to figure out how to take care of this problem, 'cause it's a problem. Thank you.
Big bucks? I may have missed a memo. Have I butchered your name so bad, you're not even recognizing it? S.T.E.F.A.N., and isn't that an L? L.U.B.I.N.S.K.I.? Okay, I apologize. Then our last speaker that signed up is Glenn Johnson. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I was told once by a, a very fine leader of the city that, you know, take care of your own problem, but this is a citywide problem. Uh, I think you've heard enough today to know that. Uh, I live at 1109 Pecan, Chicken Central. I didn't really realize that, that was the situation. I kinda wondered what this little miniature snow shovel was until I realized what it was used for was to keep the sidewalks clear. My first day in my home, or my first morning, I was putting on my flag and the mayor walked by with his wife and he greeted me and said, "Welcome to Bastrop." I said, "Well, it's good to be a Bastropian." And the very next words he said was, "If you have problems with the chickens, call the city and we'll take care of it." And I joked with him, I said, "Well, reading the paper, I thought you were the chicken hunter on Church Street." But, uh, later that day, as I wandered through my new yard, I walked out of the sidewalk and I realized that, that's what the mayor's first conversation was about the chicken because I had not used a little snow shovel to clear the sidewalk and he had to walk through it on his daily walk. Uh, it's a health hazard. I think, uh, we've, we've heard that. It is a citywide problem. I can take, I can try to take care of the chickens on my place, but they'll come back. I've, I've got, uh, anti-bird noise makers and things like that. I've made by a, a slingshot with marbles, although I'd sure like to use my pellet gun. But anyway, uh, I think we ought to enforce, I think Mr. Goldsmith is correct. We have got ordinances that if they were enforced, would probably solve the problem or at least minimize it to a tolerable le, level. That is, don't allow the nuisance to be perpetrated by people feeding the chickens. Remove the chickens that are, the, the feral chickens that have left the sanctuary. Uh, trap the roosters. Um, and I, I don't really have a problem, there's, on my block, there are lots of coops of chickens. They don't bother. It's the roosters at three o'clock. And it's a, uh, it's a, uh, life, quality of life problem because if your wife's not sleeping, it's not happy. So, uh, uh, I, I jokingly said that, uh, what we ought to do is, uh, build a wall and make the chickens pay for it and put them on the other side of the sanctuary. But, but that's, that's, that's silly, but there are solutions. And if the Bermuda can take care of it, then, uh, then the city of Bastrop can, can take care of it and make a quality of life. I think that both those that are pro-chickens and those that have a real problem of the healthy living in a chicken-infested area, I think we can solve the problem to the satisfaction of both. The sanctuary may need to be in a different place. I, I agree, if it's not a suitable place for the chickens, find a place so that they don't keep migrating. I did check my, uh, my, uh, uh, deed and the chickens did not convey with, and I told the, the, uh, real estate agent that, "Tell Mayor Ohr to come back and get his chickens." And she said, "Oh, no, it's just the ambiance." And we thought about trapping the chickens and taking them over to her house further west. Anyway, y'all have a hard job to do, but I think enforcing the ordinances as they currently stand will solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Did Mr. Lubinski come back? Has anyone, I, I just wanna make sure, give him an opportunity. Okay, Council, we're now, um, on the third item. Thank you very much for being respectful of each other. Thank you for ta, staying to your time limits. Um, it's eight twenty-five, so we're ahead of schedule, which I know all of us are thankful for. Um, at this point, we're supposed to have a discussion amongst ourselves. In all fairness, we cannot dump this on the City Manager and the city staff. We're the ones that run for office. We're the ones that are charged with setting policy. We need to give some direction to the City Manager. It, I don't think we'll be able to come up with the final answer tonight. We're certainly not gonna be voting on anything tonight, but it is, I feel like we, we owe the City Manager some feedback so that we have a direction to go so we can have a, a further conversation. Honestly, ladies and gentlemen, we didn't know how many people were gonna show up. We didn't know if we were gonna need to have three more meetings. I feel like, um, we had a fair representation of folks this evening. It was interesting to me that it was a, a pretty balanced conversation. I also want everyone to know, if you have written an email, if you have sent a text message, all of that information is, has been gathered up and all of Council has that. In all fairness, um, not everyone sends the emails to everyone. I, I feel like I get, um, absolutely most of them and, uh, but I'm sure there's a few that the City, City Manager gets that I don't have.
New copy of social media, Facebook, and Nextdoor.
Thank you. The City Manager's reminding me that we also went to Facebook, Nextdoor, and I think that's it. So, we've gotten comments off of social media. We've gotten emails that you've sent directly to, um, the mayor, the City Manager, or a Council member. So, we, we're doing our very best to consolidate all of the information. I absolutely want Council to have an opportunity to review all of that. Thank you, Mr. Goldsmith, for Bermuda. I won't, please don't call the city of Buta and ask them for their, um, ordinance. Um, that's, that's great information to have. We'll be taking a look at that as well. I'd like to give an opportunity, um, Council, if each one of you might just say a little bit, I, I want us to then come together and be able to give the City Manager some going forward, what we would like her to do. Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yeah, I think what I took away, what I take away from this evening's discussion is, I don't, I heard on both sides of the, of the aisle that there is an issue of too many chickens, especially roosters. There were, uh, I think a common theme to thin the chickens out, particularly the roosters, but, uh, you know, I, I heard also that the chickens reproduce quickly so that whatever we do, we're gonna have to do either, uh, very severe, just elimination, which I don't see happening, uh, or an ongoing program of control. And I think that ongoing program of control would, would, would accommodate both sides of, of the, the aisle on this issue. Uh, but, you know, to me, the things, uh, that I see as far as our city ordinance, it seems to be rather clear that if we have wild animals that create nuisance, odors, pests, and I, I don't have the whole list, that it is in violation of our city ordinance. And so, I think from that standpoint, uh, we need to deal with the, the feral animals that, that, uh, that don't comply outside of our sanctuary area. Uh, one of the things that I heard over and over again was not feeding the chickens. And I think, um, that, that is something we should consider, uh, creating a, an ordinance or rule, whatever. I, if, if it's already on the books, fine, but enforce, if we know that people are feeding the chickens in, uh, those areas outside of the sanctuary area, that, that should be prohibited. Um, and, you know, I think that we need to do, uh, some research, uh, from Buta or Bermuda or one of those places to find out what the most cost-effective way of trimming our, our flock here, of reducing the number of chickens, of trying to, uh, displace the chickens that are outside the sanctuary, uh, try to eliminate the feral chickens and if, if there's a way, if you can identify a feral chicken from a free-range chicken, I, I'm not a chicken expert, but, um, you know, I think going forward that we are gonna have to deal with removal of chickens from those areas of town, um, where, uh, they are not authorized to be.
Thank you, Gary. Councilmember Ennis, do you have comments?
Well, I'm, I'm a great lover of chickens and, uh, I've talked to quite a few people around the city, uh, in this area that's affected. I've been walking the area and, and visiting with folks. And, uh, it is a problem. I, I mean, it's, it's an amazing problem. Um, I think what we come down to is what some of our citizens have said tonight is, we have several separate, uh, issues that we need to deal with. Um, I'm strongly in favor of the, of the sanctuary remaining, but we've got to make it more viable. Uh, we've, I mean, the little guys can't be expected to stay in that area if it's not habitable for them. Uh, we've got to solve that problem. And, uh, we've also got to thin the herd, so to speak, like, uh, Mayor Protem Schiff said. Uh, we can't have this kind of problem, you know, on Pecan Street li, like it currently is existing. So, um, I think it's a two-pronged effort, bottom line, and, um, now, the best way to round them up now, I'm also not saying that we need to harm the chickens. We need to find a way to quote, "round them up." That sounds kinda brutal, but, um, for lack of better words, I think we need to find a way to humanely capture the chickens. Uh, as I understand it, there are quite a few folks who, who will take the chickens. I was talking to somebody at church this weekend about the issue and she said, "I live out on five acres in the country. I'd love to have some free-range chickens." So, there are people out there in our community who would be willing to take some of the roosters and the hens, uh, if we could round them up. I, I think it's, I think it's an issue of figuring out how to do these two, to, uh, solve these two issues and move ahead. Now, I'm not a chicken expert, but maybe we can, like Mayor Schiff, uh, Mayor Protem Schiff said, maybe we can find out how to do it from Buta.
Councilmember Nelson, words of wisdom?
Well, words. You know, one of the things that, that, that came to light here, it's, and it's pretty obvious, if we have an ordinance, we need to adhere to the aud, ordinance. As, as the policymaking body of the city, I think it's incumbent upon us to ensure that we're adhering to the ordinance, uh, that was set out by, either by us or by our predecessors. Several different issues, the sanctuary certainly is a question out there. Do we retain the sanctuary? And like, uh, Councilmember Ennis, I'm in favor of retaining the sanctuary. The problem is the feral chickens. How do we control the feral chickens? What means are we going to employ to, uh, to address the feral chicken issue? And also whether or not people are feeding and watering the, the chickens and, and keeping them in that area that is an area that they're, for, for the most part, were not desired to be retained in. Uh, I think we need to identify whether or not we have the means and the will to address the management of the chickens. I, I don't remember this when we set out our council priorities of us having any conversation about chickens. And obviously, we needed to have this conversation based upon the participation of the citizens here. And so, it's something we're, we're, we are really gonna have to study and I hate to place it up on the City Manager and I don't think we should. I think we need to make a clear decision as a policymaking body of this, of this community to enforce our own ordinances first and foremost. If we're not gonna enforce them, then we need to change them.
Councilmember Jones, do you have any comments?
Uh, I'd like to direct the City Manager to review the options that have been provided to us. And I think that we should immediately remove roosters from the Con Street Inn, from Miss Leisure's, from the Johnsons', from, uh, Sue Ellen's, from anyone who spoke here tonight who is having an issue with these roosters illegally causing damage and being in their yard. Those should be the people that, that, and I would really think that we should be able to address that within the next two weeks. Um, I don't know really how much more we have to talk about this. Um, well, I agree, but we've been given, I mean, this has been a big problem for a long time and it's been kicked to the curb. And I know that I tried to work on this last year and I didn't get any cooperation at all and look at where we are today. This is a huge problem. And then I think that we ought to talk to the DMO about organizing a rooster roundup and make it a really fun festival that we can bring people into town with and sell tickets and sell roosters and chickens that we round up. Sell T-shirts, yeah.
And T-shirts, she was suggesting. Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Peterson?
Jesus, fun. But first of all, we'll thank everybody for coming by, offering your input. Heard some awful, uh, interesting suggestions out there about how to go about this. Uh, not like the, the net gun, you know, it's, it's a safe, effective way to get those chickens rounded up. It's gonna take a while. It's not gonna be an easy task to round them up, 'cause we all know that we're overrun by roosters. It's gonna take a while and, uh, do know right now, the city does not have the manpower to do that. So, we're gonna have to work on some different issues to try to come up with some ways to control this thing and, and, uh, I'm gonna just tell the City Manager straight up that we, uh, gonna have to give it some thought before even I can get back with you. And, uh, we just have to talk together as a group and come up with some, some suggestions that we can move forward to solve this problem.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. I really, I, I wanna reiterate what Councilmember Peterson said. Thank you guys so much for coming. I, I know it's, it's a huge commitment of time and I'm exceptionally pleased that we can disagree without being disagreeable. And I really do think we can come up with something that we can all work together. What I have heard, I believe from the dais for the City Manager is, I don't hear anyone saying, "Eliminate the sanctuary." At, at this point, we may get there because I also heard will and means and I, um, I believe this is not something that we can address once. It, we are going to have to have a long-term strategy to deal with it or we're simply kicking the can down the road to someone else and I don't think that's fair. Um, so I hear you, I, I believe we can tell the City Manager that our expectation is to keep the sanctuary. I think several of you have also agreed that perhaps if the, um, ordinance isn't extremely clear about where that sanctuary is or if that sanctuary area is only a parking lot, that by its own definition is possibly not a sanctuary. So, we need to look at having it in a place where it can do some good. The roosters, I believe, um, I strongly support Councilmember Jones's opinion. So, I would like, um, with Council's permission, I'd like the City Manager to go at this with addressing the roosters outside of the defined area as a, as a highest priority. And then we can work at whether, I'm in complete agreement with us whole, upholding the ordinance that we have on the record, but it also sounds like we've got some clarity issues with the existing ordinance and we need to address that so that, um, the City Manager's clear, we know what we're voting on and, and we have an idea of exactly how much work we're taking on for the future. Um, so the roosters, keep the sanctuary, um, clarity on the ordinance. Is there any, any other major thing? City Manager, is that clear enough or now you get to let us?
And I don't mean to be flippant, but can you order Jesus and the twelve disciples?
Uh, uh, amen. I hear you.
Because what we have really done is regurgitate the conversation we've had with six, since six-thirty with no clear solution. So, um, the challenge we have is, I have one animal control officer, part-time, who also does code enforcement.
Over ten square miles?
Yes, ma'am. And one of the high priorities in the work plan is code enforcement. And there's just so much of Troy to go around. I think the argument that has been made this evening needs to be really heard and that is they're feral. They're wild. They're very hard to catch. We did not get here overnight. We're not going to fix this overnight. Um, one of the things we're gonna have to work out is, um, this is a partnership and I am delighted at the participation and I'm, I really appreciate those of you that came with an opinion and was willing to hear the other side and clarified your opinion and said you learned something because that really was the point of the conversation. But it's gonna take all of us working together. This is not a Troy Walters problem. This is not a police department problem. This isn't a City Manager problem. This is a community problem. And it's gonna take people that are feeding them to quit feeding them. to take people that are feeding them to quit feeding them. And it's going to take people that want this problem solved to give us access to your property. We do not have the authority to come on private property and solve a problem if you don't give us the ability to be there. So we're going to have to work in partnership to work with the community. So what I hear is, both sides believe we have an issue. I think we can all agree on we've got too many roosters. I think that's a place that we can find common ground and work toward. So what we need to do is take this direction. I love Herb Goldsmith. This is the second or third time he has sent me a solution. I love the fact he's a researcher, and thank God for Bermuda, because we're going to study a feral chicken management plan. But staff needs time to do that, because the, we've been doing a lot of soul-searching about this internally, and what we have found is, for every problem we solve, we create another one. There is no manna coming, and that's why I guess I made a joke about Jesus and the 12 disciples, because there really isn't going to be an obvious solution. I suspect if there was one, this would have already been solved, and we wouldn't have to have a community meeting about chickens. So we have your names and addresses. I hope that you'll take our call, because some of you we will need to visit with and get some assistance on how we could work together and partner. And I will pledge to you that sometime probably in mid-January, because we've got a very booked December, we will come back and have a conversation with you. I would also say to you that it's not going to be one conversation. We're going to have to have multiple conversations. I will also tell you, when we bring you a plan, some of it won't work, and we'll have to do some starts and some stops, and it'll be not one thing, it'll be a myriad of things. But I hope that we'll continue the dialogue. I hope that we'll continue to appreciate both sides of the story and see if we can figure out what the answer is.
One other thing that I, I believe we, we know that we need to talk about, and that is, I've heard overwhelmingly that people generally don't have a problem with coops, but I know that, that our current ordinance, we may need to look at that.
Yes, ma'am. Right now, our ordinance requires a 50-foot buffer, which in downtown on small lots is a problem. And I think as a community, we can all agree, we like chickens. I think we need to perhaps make it easier for people to have chickens in coops. I don't know what the right answer is, but I do know for some, and I'll just be honest with you, we do have a situation where we have some folks that have coops. They're too close to a house, and in their front yard, they got feral chickens. And so we're letting the feral chickens work, and we're arguing about chickens in coops. And so it's kind of put us in a bind internally that, yes, we get paid to enforce the ordinance, and we will, but I'd like to believe that there's not some misconceptions or difficulties with that. So one of the things that we are going to look at is a way to have chickens in Bastrop and provide folks the charm and the quaintness, maybe in a different way. There are lots of cute Pinterest chicken, chicken coops in an urban environment that would certainly add to the mystique, but for instance, where my husband and I live, we were excited when we moved to Bastrop. Oh, we get to have, you know, chickens in a coop, and I had Pinterest picked out. I can't get 50 feet anywhere on my property to have chickens, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. So we're going to do some homework on that and see, again, if there is a happy medium, but there is.
And that may also have to include the number of coops, the size of coops. Just wherever you draw the line, you've now drawn a line, and somebody's going to be happy or unhappy. But we're going to have to come up with something, and I think we have to have some clarity around it so that we're not dealing with this again.
The other thing that I do want to underscore, and I think both Councilmember Nelson and Peterson brought up, and that is the will and the means to address. An ongoing management plan is a cost to the taxpayers. I appreciate, we want a foundation, but somebody has to manage that foundation. Somebody has to get out and engage all of these civic organizations, get them lined up, cause them to want to go out and raise money, and somebody's got to manage the money. All of that can be done. I think all of those are viable options, but they do take resources. And so this is a choice. And one of the conversations we'll be having in the winter and spring is doing a survey so that everybody gets to participate in the types of projects and programs that, that we want to have. And if we fund this program, we're not funding something else. So I appreciate you bringing that up, because that is going to have to be part of the conversation, because if we put valuable resources to managing a chicken sanctuary, we're not going to be doing something else. And so we never like the choices, but that's the reality of the world that we have, and that is a finite resource. But I am seriously delighted at the conversation, seriously delighted at the input, and we'll continue to work on it and continue to have dialogue.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Schiff, I think you had one?
Yeah, I had like two issues. One is, I think we should have a spot on our website where people can specifically register their complaint about chickens in their yard. And number two, I think we should have a, if we need permission, we should have our attorney draw up a form, a release form that says, "City is approved to get on the property to remove chickens for a six-month or one-year period," or whatever is appropriate, so that we know that anybody that complains, if they want their chickens dealt with, that we can get on their property whenever we have the resources to do so.
And thank you for that asterisk, because that's traps, and that's people, and that's part of what we will quantify when we bring this back in January, because I think you heard Ms. Frugé talk about, we had a trap, and we caught 13 or 14 that week. And so if we're, if we're doing that with, with Troy, then Troy's not doing other things. So we, we may have to supplement that with some additional manpower. All of those things are things we need to study and bring back so we can be smart about this, because I think what she said was, it worked for a period of time, but they came back and more came with them. So we can't go at this with a lot of vigor and then back off, because if we do that, then we'll be back having this conversation another year or two. So I think we've got to make that long-term commitment.
Thank you, city manager. Yes, Councilmember Jones?
I really want to point out what you said, Linda, which is, we really do not have the resources. This is a huge issue for the city. So if there's a way that we can, like, deputize chicken roundup volunteers and like a chicken task force, I mean, I think that's something that we should really look at, is maybe having, you know, a board of directors that trains people and helps organize and, and do, you know, with oversight from the city, because we, we absolutely, that's an issue.
Well, and I appreciate the idea that there's civic organizations, and one of them could take a week, but anybody who's ever tried to organize childcare or donuts at church on Sunday, you know that that sounds really good, but at the end of the day, somebody has to own that and take care of that. And what we're saying is, if it's the city, we're either not doing something else, or now we're talking about raising taxes to take care of chickens. So if there is an organization out there that's willing to step up and absolutely own it with minimal supervision, that's an idea that's on the table. But what we're all frankly saying is, there is not a group of 10 people that are just waiting around with something to do tomorrow morning to help gather up the roosters. That's just not the situation that we're in. Any other comments from Council? Okay, it's 8:50. Drive home careful. Thank you so much for your time, and this meeting is adjourned.